And welcome to this meeting of Westminster's mayor and common council. The council meets on the second and fourth Mondays every month. Usually, we meet at Westminster's historic City Hall, the Emerald Hill Mansion on Longwell Avenue. Tonight, due to a water pipe rupture at the city offices on Main Street and the need to temporarily relocate staff to work out of City Hall, we meet tonight here at the Carroll Arts Center. The Arts Center, formerly the Carroll Theater, was purchased by the city and subsequently renovated to serve as the home of the Arts Center, which leases the building from the city for a dollar a year. We're very proud to have this great cultural resource here in the heart of the city and appreciate the Arts Council's assistance in providing us this space to meet tonight. Please note that council meetings, although open to the public, are also available and streamed live on the city's YouTube page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. Now we begin, as we do every meeting, with the Pledge of the Flag, followed by a moment of silence.
It's to the left behind you.
Behind you, Kevin.
Right behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As a courtesy to everyone, please take a moment to silence your cell phones or any other electronic devices you have that might otherwise disrupt the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation on that, we appreciate it. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. Copies of the agenda are available— Are they available, Mr.?
Sir.
Copies of the agenda—for those who are here with us tonight—are available here in the front of the room. I have a statement for the record about the closed meeting of Monday, February 24th, 2025. In accordance with the general provisions, Article Section 3-306(c)(2) of the Annotated Code of Maryland, and without objection, it is noted that the minutes of tonight's meeting reflect that the common council met in a closed meeting on Monday, February 24th, 2025, at 8:24 PM pursuant to General Provision Article Section 3-305(b)(1) to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. Motion to close the meeting was made by Mr. Kavachi, seconded by Mr. Hoff. The vote was unanimous. There were no staff members in attendance at the meeting. The common council took no official action during the meeting, and the closed meeting adjourned at 9:12 PM. Thank you. Tonight, we have two presentations. First, we're pleased—something that, you know, we've been hearing about for a while and are looking forward to hearing about officially tonight. One of our constituents, Maggie Coons, has been working on a project to see if Westminster could be a bird city, and we're very pleased tonight to have Ms. Coons here to share that with us. Thank you. And there's a microphone here in the front for you to use.
Okay, does everybody—okay, great. Well, thank you all for having me here tonight. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for inviting me to be here, and thanks to all the city staff who've helped me get here, as well as our team. So my name is Maggie Coons. I—by day, I work at the Health Department, but on weekends, and by night, I'm a birdwatcher and bird lover. I am also a master naturalist. I am the secretary of the Friends of Hoshua Bear Branch and the vice president of the Carroll County Bird Club. So, you can tell I really like birds—bird earrings, bird socks. So, I am here tonight to encourage you to make Westminster the ninth bird city in Maryland. When I found out about Bird City, I was very excited, realizing that, of course, Westminster is already a tree city and a bee city, and so knowing that the city has a commitment to balancing the needs of the city with nature, and also knowing that if there's ever such thing as a flower city, we could become a city of the birds, the bees, the flowers, and the trees—I had to move forward, so. All right, so what is a bird city? A bird city is a community that has been recognized for its work to increase habitat for birds, to reduce threats to birds, to educate and engage people on bird-related issues, and to promote sustainability. So you'll see that theme throughout this brief presentation. Why Bird City? I'm gonna go backwards here, but for the love of birds, of course, that's my top reason, but also for connection with all of nature and ecosystem health. There, as we know, you know, like a canary in a coal mine, right? What's good for birds is good for other things in our ecosystem, and what's bad for birds is bad for other things in our ecosystem. It's also good for personal wellness and a connection with nature. There's evidence—much evidence—to show that being out in nature is good for people. It's physical health and mental health. Even listening to bird songs is good for your mental health. So, those are good points for people. And then tourism. So you may not be a birdwatcher, but just imagine—if you are a birdwatcher and you get up early in the morning to try to see some birds out in the—you know, in the parks, and you're walking around for a few hours with a cup of coffee, maybe a granola bar, and craning your neck, walking around, after a few hours, what do you want to do? You want to sit down and go get something to eat, right? You're not gonna go far, so it's a great—it's a great source of dollars for tourism. And then, of course, community pride. So the Bird City idea was actually modeled on the Tree City idea. So the first bird city was in Wisconsin. And here's the—here are some organizations that make up the Bird City Network. It's actually international, you'll see in a second. So there are, I think, nine states, if I can count, and two countries that are part of the Bird City Network. And Bird City, Maryland, is its own organization. It is part of the Bird City Network, and it oversees currently eight cities, bird cities in Maryland, and also several bird campuses in Maryland. And Frederick just became the first county to be a bird county, which I didn't even know was a thing, so that's also very exciting. The other exciting thing about being a bird city that I have not mentioned yet is that we get to—my slide works—pick a signature bird as a bird city. We get to pick a bird that represents us. So for example, Annapolis' signature bird is an osprey, which we're—you all see—you know, you see flying around the—by the ocean and bay. I think one of—the see, Frederick has the Black-crowned Knight Heron, and I think Salisbury has the Great Blue Heron. So there are lots of cool birds to choose from. That's just kind of an exciting way to introduce Bird City to people and to engage lots of kids and lots of community members in picking our signature bird for Westminster. And I'm gonna put—there we go. So Bird City, Maryland, the organization provides, of course, guidance on the issues and actions that we choose to take to become a bird city, and the process of applying and renewing. They provide recognition materials such as signage, and they provide a custom website to showcase our work and also to bring people—to bring birders to our community. So what are the requirements? Now that I've got you all hooked, you want to know what other requirements? What do we have to do to become a bird city? Well, thankfully, I think the city has been working on this and looking at actions that you're already taking that are—will qualify us to be a bird city. Several of them are things that you all are doing at the property in Wakefield, and several other things that are happening across the city. So this—you can see there are—I think we're required to do three of the first list, which are those things that really are good for all species. One of the second, which is addressing the threats, those include, like, cats, blast collisions, light pollution, pesticides. One thing from the next column, which is educating and engaging people, and the bird club is doing a lot of these things already, and promoting sustainability is the last one. And the two things that we're required to do, in addition, are to—I think the mobilizing support symbolizes the resolution that we have to declare as the city of Westminster. And the second one is holding an annual World Migratory Bird Day. And the best coincidence—this happened to me in a while—is that World Migratory Bird Day is actually the same day as one of our wonderful festivals in Maryland, which is the Flower and Jazz Festival. It's actually my favorite festival. And it is—so we actually had our first migratory—World Migratory Bird Day last year at the festival. Here we are, on the left there, educating people about birds, talking about great places to go birding in Westminster, and talking about last year's theme, which was protect insects and protect birds, and giving away lots of stickers and other cool things. This year's theme is even more appropriate to becoming a bird city, is shared spaces, creating bird-friendly cities and communities. So this was a great match. We already—we're partnering with the city of Westminster to come out to one of your great festivals and spread the word about birds. So our next steps are to complete the application online, to receive the designation, and share with the public, to work with the community to choose our bird, and to promote and continue our work. And here with me to support me are some of our Bird City committee members, including Sue Yingling, who has talked to you about her idea to work with her bird club that she had started at the Boys and Girls Club, and they want to work on having some bluebird boxes in Westminster. So—we have lots of ideas. We're very excited to be here and really thank you for your time.
Right. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Coons.
Mr. President.
Yeah, just—okay. We'll start with the mayor. Go ahead.
Yes. What is the most interesting bird that you've seen in Westminster to date?
Okay, Westminster City.
Or at Wakefield, or?
Wakefield is great. So, I mean, it depends on what you say by—I mean, indigo buntings are awesome, amazing blue bird, incredibly bright blue bird. I've seen a brown thrasher at my feeder. We have lots of woodpeckers, yellow-bellied sap-suckers in the winter. Gosh, you guys—what do you—
There are regular boys, like a casserole, being small animals.
That always leaves an impression.
Yes. And we have a lot of bluebirds, which are beautiful. Chimney swifts are really interesting. If you see them in the evening, they look like bats, but they're not bats, but they're also a really ecologically important species. So it's a great question, but I—for me, probably my favorite is the indigo bunting.
All right. Thank you. I'm busy. Thank you. Mr. Kavachi.
Well, first, Ms. Coons, thank you very much. It was good information. We have a relatively light schedule tonight, so I'm gonna take just a minute and—
Okay, sure.
—share something with you. I was excited when I saw this, which is gonna very much surprise my colleagues up here because I'm probably the least touchy-feely of the group, certainly not somebody typically eating a granola bar, but—
You might think about it, Mr. Kavachi.
But I thought you might appreciate this. So, during my time in the military, I did numerous deployments and unfortunately lost significant hearing due to weapons discharge and things like that during my service. So when I got out, my hearing was really, really damaged. I wear hearing aids, as you can see. So for about 25 years, I just refused to get hearing aids. I felt I was too young and just didn't want to, you know, be an old man. And finally, about six—five, six years ago, I broke down and finally got them at the VA. And the one thing—I had no idea that I was missing all that time—was the sound of birds. And sitting on my front porch the first day after I got my hearing aids, it was just unbelievable. I live up on Willis Street, so, you know, we have—I have a decent piece of land with a lot of trees, and I never appreciated how much birds were just so beautiful to listen to them until—and now I thoroughly enjoy it, and it just changed my whole perspective on it. So I'm really excited about this. So I really appreciate you doing this, and my vote would be the peregrine falcon because I'm a bit of an adrenaline junkie, so that's my thought.
That's a good one.
Yeah, exactly. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Anyone else wish to—
Mr. President.
—to comment? Mr. Hoff.
I noticed that there were some college campuses. Have you—
Yes.
—had any discussions with McDaniel regarding this?
We have. We have a couple people on our committee who are—not—that I'm not married to, that are— That are—do work at McDaniel, and we have talked about it. We have not gotten very far, but we have some ideas, yes. I mean, they have amazing trees up there, of course, the golf course, so it would be definitely something we would be interested in, probably a good next step, yeah.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
What else? All right, well, Ms. Coons, thank you very much. I know we—we enjoy listening to—you know, seeing the birds in our backyard. My wife feeds them, and, you know, we've got an amazing variety that we get to see. And so I think, you know, maybe down the road, we'll have to look to you and the, you know, the Westminster Bird Group for some advice on a signature bird, because we'll need some help figuring that out. But, yes, it's terrific, and we're glad you're reaching out for partnerships already with groups like the Boys and Girls Club and Opportunities at McDaniel and things like that. So I think that's how we build communities, you know, that are in support of something like this. So that's terrific that you're doing this. So it appears later on the agenda, and looking forward to dealing with it then, but thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Speaking of McDaniel College, one of the things that we're frequently pleased to do at our council meetings is hear from a representative from McDaniel. When Dr. Julia Jaskin became president of the college, she met with the mayor and council and said that it was her intention to try and have a member of her senior staff present as often as possible at council meetings, to share a little information on what's going on up on the hill, and also to take back to the college what's happening in the city. And, you know, that has more often than not been the case, and we're very pleased to have this wonderful relationship—closer relationship with the college than we have had in some time. And tonight with us, we have Ms. Heidi Regal, the associate vice president at the college, and pleased to hear from her tonight.
Good evening—oops. Good evening, everyone. I am so glad to be here and thank you for having me. I wanted to report out that we had our first admitted student day on a very windy March 1st, but the parents and the families were so excited to be on the hill and check out Westminster as well. And our next admitted student day, for, you know, the kids who are choosing, hopefully McDaniel, is Saturday, April 5th, so you might see an uptick in business downtown. We have our Carroll County Scholars Information Session tomorrow night at Westminster High, and this is for the Carroll County Scholars Program, where local businesses feed into that program through donations and gifts to support just how to navigate the college search process in general. And students can sign up for that starting in eighth grade. So tomorrow night, we will have eighth graders as well as 10th graders in the auditorium at Westminster High to learn more about that. On April 11th, we are hosting the Tournament of Champions, and for those of you who don't know, it's something that has been happening for a very, very long time on the hill. I can attest to that because I participated as a volunteer when I was a student on the hill in the '90s, and during NCAA Division III week, over 100 McDaniel College students will team up with more than 100 elementary and middle school students with special needs. And this event is organized by students in the college's adaptive physical education class in conjunction with our Carroll County Public Schools. So it's an amazing event, and the participants challenge themselves individually in various athletic events throughout the day alongside with their McDaniel buddies, who are current college students. We have a lot going on, so President Jaskin also asked me to remind everybody of our academic symposium, which is Monday, May 5th. So sneak on out and up to the hill to see what our students and our faculty are researching. The weather is warmer, and we have a lot of Green Terror athletic events that are free on the hill. So if you have kids who play baseball and you want them to see a college game, get them up there. Or if you coach a team, bring the team up and cheer on the Green Terror, we would love to have you. And if you haven't heard, we have secured a state grant for sophomores and juniors in high school to participate in our McDaniel Summer Engineering Institute. It's an institute for two weeks on campus for in-depth research. It's free, but students must apply for it because it does have limited space, and all of that information is on our website. And last but not least, tomorrow is our 1867 Challenge, so we would welcome any involvement as we try to hit our goal of 600 donors. And it's 1867 because that's when we were founded, and it lasts 1,867 minutes. So it starts at 9:00 AM tomorrow and ends at 4:07 promptly on Wednesday.
Ms. Regal, thank you very much. We don't often mention it, but it's wonderful to have an institution like McDaniel College in our community, not just as an economic anchor, but also for the cultural and educational opportunities it provides. So thank you very much for joining us again tonight. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and common council on February 24th and from the closed meeting of the same date. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
And a motion by Ms. Gilbert and a second by Mr. Dehoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. We have one item on the consent calendar this evening. I may have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Then a motion by Mr. Kavachi. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Mr. Dehoff. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is approved. Time now for a report from the mayor. Dr. Becker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Things are starting to get a little busy again, I think, now with the weather changing a bit as well, becoming a little bit warmer. I'd first like to say thank you to the Carroll County Arts Center for allowing us to use our facility while our building at 45 West Main Street is being repaired from water damage, as Council President Pecoraro mentioned earlier today. Hopefully, you know, we'll be back in our normal working spots before too long, but I would like to take a minute to acknowledge the city staff, who have been adaptable and phenomenal team players during this time, and I'd also like to thank our city administrator for organizing a temporary working space in City Hall and ensuring that the city is still able to provide the top-notch service that we have always been providing to our residents. On Friday, March 28th, I attended the opening evening of Tobacco on Main, Tom Cannon's new venture in town. It was packed with clients in the lounge, enjoying a cigar. Several pursued the cigar selection, and I was talked into staying long enough to enjoy a cigar with Councilmember Tony Kavachi, which was well worth it. Also on Friday, I was able to spend some time at Westminster Elementary School, talking to fourth graders about MML's If I Were a Mayor contest. There were tons of questions, lots of discussions, about what a mayor does. I'd just like to say thank you to Westminster Elementary School. The school has always been so welcoming to me and so accommodating. They ask me in every year to talk to their fifth-grade graduating class before they go on to middle school, and I—so I just wanted to recognize the administration at the school, Mrs. Winston and Mrs. Andrews, for always being, again, so accommodating, and to all the fourth graders and their teachers for attending with the students. And I do know, having heard from teachers later in the week, that several submissions from Westminster Elementary School were sent in to the MML contest. On Monday, March 3rd, I met with Cub Scout PAC 420 to talk to the Cub Scouts about meeting their goal of speaking with someone who is elected to their position and to talk about the type of voting that was used to elect them and why. Again, we had a great conversation. We also spent some time talking about what a mayor does as well. Some of the Cub Scouts had fantastic questions, and so I ended up hanging around a little bit longer than anticipated, having some snacks with them, but then talking to some of the Cub Scouts individually about some of the questions that they had asked. And then finally, what a day on Saturday for the Celtic Canter and Irish Festival. I won't say much. I imagine all my colleagues want to say something as well, but a big thank you to everyone who contributed to make Saturday a rousing success. The races were packed. It's always good to do the .5K with the council, and the bars and restaurants were crowded through the evening. Councilmember Hoff and I attended the whiskey tasting, then we headed to Covelent, where I met Councilmember Gilbert and a friend, and then we headed over to City Park Gaming and Brew Room. Both locations had some really great live Irish music. I swung into collision course for a snack and eventually made my way back home after a few other stops before ending at Ernie's. While I enjoyed the day, my heart was most happy for the businesses, retail and restaurants on Main Street. People were out all evening on Main Street, even 8:00, 9:00 PM. Some of my friends were telling me they were just leaving town after having been in town for almost 12 hours, spending their money on Main Street. So I am most happy for our businesses and our downtown who had a stellar day, and that is all, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Becker. Move on now to reports from committees. We'll begin with our representative to the Arts Council, in which facility we are tonight, Mr. Dehoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is an honor and a privilege to be here. This is one of only a few of the adaptive reuse facilities in the state. Easton has one, the Avalon Theater, Pokemoke City in Hagerstown, and the council president's always a bit modest, but the council president played a key and critical role in developing or adaptive—the adaptive reuse of the Carroll Theater. It was a lot of work. It was very hard. It wasn't without controversy, but we—we managed to get it accomplished. It's been a great facility, and it brings a lot of people into Westminster. So there's some great programming coming up with the Arts Council. Check the website for the Peep Show and some of the other great events that are coming up. And on your way out, check the—check the Art Honors Show, the—that's—in the Tevis Theater. It's really good. That'll be all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. The Economic and Community Development Committee, Mr. Hoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. The one thing I won't mention, and the mayor kind of touched on it—I know we all enjoy the strolls, they—and Recreation and Parks does an amazing job with them, but it does often strike me—and the mayor touched on it—is the economic benefit these kind of events bring to the city of Westminster. You know, Saturday was a beautiful day, and everywhere I went, there were just tons of people. And I know anecdotally, you know, for some of the different strolls, a lot of times I have different friends that are coming up from Baltimore or DC, and I always have—I always really enjoy when it's someone who hasn't been to Westminster before, because they normally are just blown away by, you know, the quality of the festivals and strolls that we have, and they're always walk away very impressed with Westminster. So I know we all really enjoy these events. They're fun events, but the economic component of bringing people to town and kind of getting a chance to show off the city to people that maybe otherwise wouldn't come here, I just think is invaluable. So I just wanted to touch on that under Economic and Community Development, because it kind of occurred to me on Saturday as I was going in and out of different places and how incredibly busy it was, and I know there were a lot of downtown businesses that had amazing days on Saturday. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. On behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll just say that we are beginning the budget season. I know that Ms. Impulse and Ms. Rogers have been hard at work—hard at work already on looking at—looking at developing our budget for the next fiscal year. We've all been—had shared with you the schedule of council work sessions for the budget, so we're looking forward to some Finance Committee meetings where we have those conversations that we need to have preliminarily with the staff, and then presenting the budget to all of you for the opportunity to have some thorough conversations amongst ourselves about the city's priorities. Of course, those priorities are based on our strategic planning session that we held earlier, and as we always do, we try to align our budget practices to our strategic planning, and Ms. Impulse does a good job of helping us do that, so looking forward to a good conversation about that this year. As always, of course, we do not anticipate an increase—in fact, we will not have an increase in the tax rate. Personnel Committee, I have nothing to share on that front. Public Safety, Mr. Kavachi.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Criminal Investigation Bureau of the Westminster Police Department detectives were able to identify and obtain an arrest warrant for Deonte Jessup, a 25-year-old from Cockeysville, Maryland. He's a subject to alleged to have committed a burglary on Pennsylvania Avenue, where he confronted and assaulted two individuals known to him. Mr. Jessup was located and arrested in Westminster, received multiple charges, and is currently incarcerated at the detention center. And I think just once again, that just demonstrates how good of a job our Criminal Investigation Bureau does, and I know they do that also with the support of our regular patrols. On March 3rd, Chief Ledwell attended the Quarterly Police Accountability Board Meeting, where he presented the board with information from the preceding quarter. Also tomorrow, Chief Ledwell, along with other Westminster Police Department members, will once again assist the leading—in leading the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Carroll Justice and Law Day. This day leads the class through presentations from local law enforcement leaders, provides tours of court dockets and the detention center, a working lunch with a presentation from a circuit court judge, and then an afternoon at the police academy with a variety of hands-on experiences. So Chief, we appreciate you doing that and putting us all in a good, positive light. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kavachi. Public Works Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you. Construction should commence in about two weeks for our water reuse project. The Streets Department has been busy with their normal duties as well as the water remediation— The Streets Department has been busy with their normal duties as well as the water remediation at 45, and assisting the displaced staff getting set up for City Hall, and obviously helping with us this evening and setting this up. If that wasn't enough to keep them busy, they also helped prepare and work for the Celtic Canter this past weekend, so Public Works has been extremely busy in the last few weeks. So a big thank you to their staff. Should I go right into Parks and Rec?
Please do, yes.
As everybody has mentioned, the Celtic Canter was a huge success, and I want to thank Mother Nature for providing us with the delightful weather for the event. It wasn't snowing, it wasn't raining, and it wasn't freezing cold. Everyone all day was walking along Main Street, enjoying beverages, food, music, and shopping. I was with a few different groups of folks this year, as Mayor Becker stated. I caught up with her a little later in the afternoon and discovered there were people who came from Idaho just to visit family and experience the Celtic Canter and our strolls every single year. So we are now reaching to people that live in Idaho. Along with that, after I was done walking the Main Street and enjoying the Canter and the pub crawl, decided to go to Maryland Mallett for dinner, and they were booked until 9:00 PM and stated that they're always booked with reservations, usually overbooked every night of our events and strolls. So kind of in following up with Councilman Hoff, not only do our events affect Westminster City and our businesses here, but they have a positive economic benefit to even the outlying areas of the county, so I just wanted to add that. Not that we're probably even surprised at that, because I believe it's, you know, what we're looking for, but that was just great to hear how our strolls benefit everyone, not just us.
All right, very good, thank you.
Oh, I have more.
You have more, I'm sorry.
I have more. Summer pool memberships are now on sale along with that. Positions have been posted for pool and summer camps, so take a look at our website for more details on that. And one of our upcoming events for April will be our egg sighting bunny trail and egg hunt, that will be April 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 at Wakefield Valley. Now I'm done.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Gilbert, Mr. Dehoff, anything else for the Technology Committee?
We want to thank the technology folks for all your hard work, moving folks over to City Hall and other places, undisclosed locations perhaps, with fixing them up with technology needed to continue the work fairly seamlessly. We really appreciate it, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dehoff. Now, next item on the agenda is council comments and discussion. This is an opportunity for council members to mention anything else that's on their minds that does not appear elsewhere on the agenda. Begin with Mr. Cavaci.
I don't want to beat a dead horse about everything that's already been said, just want to express my gratitude to staff for a wonderful job dealing with the tragedy over at 45, as well as putting on a great, great event for the Celtic Canter that we all enjoyed. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Mr. Dehoff.
I'm really excited about Westminster becoming a bird city. Wakefield Valley has become a huge mid-Atlantic draw for folks to come and visit town. I think, I think, I think, I think the Wakefield Regional Valley Park is just going to be a legacy issue, as Mr. Pecoraro has said before. I think it's going to be a great legacy issue, I think it's a, I think it's a wonderful asset for our community, and the bird city, I think, will just go hand in hand with it. Thank you, Mr. President, that will conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Dehoff. Ms. Gilbert.
I don't have anything additional, I think I mentioned, already mentioned the Celtic Canter. I'm excited about the birds also. I kind of whispered to the mayor earlier that I have come to realize, as I've gotten older, the appreciation of birds. I never used to have bird feeders in my yard, now I have four, plus two bird baths. So obviously the birds, and one right outside my office window, when I'm working at home.
We're all jumping the gun on our discussion of the bird city item.
We are jumping the gun.
We are, we're excited.
So obviously you can tell I'm excited. I kind of want to know if there's going to be a perk for genie birds, too, because now we have a restaurant with bird in its title.
You're going to have to hold on until we get to that discussion.
All right, all right.
All right. Mr. Hoff.
The only thing I, Mr. Cavaci touched on it, we do, the staff did an amazing job on Saturday. I know I was walking back late afternoon, and, you know, the street was shut down earlier in the day, everything was all open, and just incredible job. And my wife will be very excited about Westminster being a bird city, because she loves to feed the birds, and I have the credit card receipts to prove that.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. All right, move on, and I'll just briefly myself, just like to say two, touch on two things. One, of course, I can't leave the Celtic Canter discussion without touching on the .5K race, and I just have to say, it's always fun to be the team captain for this group, to have everybody in the .5K. I have to say, Mr. Hoff actually thought it was a competition, was kind of jumping the gun.
Oh, he was. He was out of control.
We have to restrain him next year. But it was, it was a lot of fun. I want to thank, I want to thank all my colleagues, I also want to thank, you know, of course, our great Parks and Rec staff, and the Public Works staff, and the police, and everybody else who participated in this, and the Crosswinds Church for sponsoring the event, because it was their idea, and it's a lot of fun to sort of not take, not take our running too seriously. I know Ms. Gilbert is seriously, serious about her running sometimes.
I, I.
It's fun to be able to do this. Mr. Cavaci and I kept it to a low rumble.
I, I am happy to know, we all finished.
We all finished.
Right, so we did all finish the .5K.
No one got injured.
We did.
Yes.
That was a lot of fun. I also want to just add my own thanks to our amazing staff, you know, who've just been truly incredible since the unfortunate incident at our city administrative offices, led by the city administrator Impulse. They've all been cheerful, and, and, you know, seem to be enjoying their, their little time away from their home, you know, over at City Hall. As you all know, I get the opportunity to spend some time over there, and so I've watched a lot of the activity there, well, trying to stay out of the way, and, and I'm just amazed at how well it's going and, and, you know, what they're doing in there, and I'm particularly in awe of the public works, the IT staff. I mean, it's like watching the set changes in a play, because they move stuff around. I mean, you know, we had the, we had the whiskey tasting, so they moved everybody out apart of City Hall, they moved them all back in between, they set up all the stuff, you know, for the whiskey tasting, and the Parks and Rec people came in and did their part of that. It's just, just incredible to watch all that. And so, you know, just, you know, my hat's off to all of them, and it's a pleasure to be around them all, and I hope that, you know, they're back in their, in their usual habitat soon, but it's nice to spend a little time with them over there. All right, we'll move on now to ordinances and resolutions. We have two items before, before us this evening. The first is adoption of Resolution Number 25-04, Designating the City of Westminster as a Bird City. And for, to introduce the item, we'll turn to our city administrator, Ms. Impulse.
Thank you, Mr. President. Bird City is a designation through the Bird City Network. This designation indicates that a community has been recognized for its work to increase bird habitat, reduce threats to birds, educate and engage people with bird-related issues, and promote sustainability. Information about this organization can be found at birdcity.org. Maggie Coos and the Bird Club have requested that the city take the necessary steps to apply for this designation. The Bird City Maryland application requires a minimum of 10 actions to be selected and implemented from their action matrix. We have selected the following actions for our Bird City application, which I will not read, but I will say, do not require any funding.
Oh, shoot.
Other mention, the city should require some new funding and can be achieved by enhancing existing city programming and partnering with interested community organizations such as Bird Club, Boys and Girls Club, Scouts, and McDaniel College. Staff recommends that the mayor and community council approve the adoption of Resolution Number 25-04, Designating the City of Westminster as a Bird City.
Thank you, Ms. Impulse, you always know how to appeal to our interests. So from, from the comments that have been made earlier, I have no doubt, I will have no trouble getting a motion to introduce this resolution.
I'll move to approve, Mr. President.
But a motion by Mr. Cavaci, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Hoff. Any further discussion on the side of, is there anything else you'd like to say on this that you haven't said yet?
Just excited.
Just excited about it.
Just excited about it.
All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And so Westminster is now a bird city. Ms. Coos, thank you once again for bringing this matter to our attention. All right, second item under this category is introduction of ordinance Number 2025-04, An Ordnance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster Approving Local MAP Amendment LMA 25-02, Designating Certain Real Property Located in the City of Westminster's IR Restricted Industrial Zone and Floating Cannabis Overlay Zone for the Establishment of a Cannabis Processor. Mr. Depot.
Thank you, Mr. President. Carroll Arts submitted a request for a local MAP amendment, LMA 25-04, Designate Certain Real Property Identified as Tax Account Number 07153155, Located in the IR Restricted Industrial Zone as a Floating Cannabis Overlay Zone and to Establish Cannabis Processing Use. Ordinance 2504 Proposes to Resone a Corecure Tent Space Identified as Unit 8 of the Illoron Four Convenio Plant, I missed the net properly, to Allow For the Operation of Cannabis Processing Use. Although the Floating Cannabis Overlay Zone would be applied to Unit 8, the property, including Unit 8, is still subject to the underlying IR Plan, IR Industrial, Restricted Industrial Zone regulations, as well as the Cannabis Overlay District regulations. With that, Staff recommends that the Mayor and Common Council Introduce Ordinance Number 2025-04, and Refer the Ordinance as Introduced to the Planning and Zoning Commission for its Review and Recommendation to the Mayor and Common Council. That concludes the vote.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Depot. We have a motion to introduce.
Motion to introduce.
There's a motion by Ms. Gilbert to introduce the ordinance, is there a second?
I will second.
This is second by Mr. Hoff. Is there any discussion on this? This is just for introduction and referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Hearing no discussion, we will move on to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the ordinance is hereby introduced and referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Depot. All right, next item is unfinished business. There is no unfinished business, of which I'm aware. Does anybody have any unfinished business to bring before the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is new business. We have one item here, Mr. Cavaci.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Common Council adjourn into a closed meeting on Monday, March 10th, 2025, at the conclusion of the regular meeting, in accordance with the general provisions of Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland 3-305B Subsection 1, to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affects one or more specific individuals.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci, is there a second?
I'll second.
This is second by Mr. Hoff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it, and the council will go into a closed session at the conclusion of its regular meeting. I will note that we do not intend to return to an open session at the conclusion of the closed meeting. Time now for departmental reports. Ms. Impulse.
Thank you, sir. We have a couple of MVPs that I want to announce tonight. I'm going to start with our community partnerships, which include, of course, Carroll Arts Center, who stepped in their way to help us figure out how we'll have this meeting in a public place. That's large enough for all of us. And also, I want to take a moment to thank the Carroll Media Center, who's running around and giving me a microphone. Let's make sure that those who are listening from afar understand how important the Community Media Center has been to the city. We cannot record the meeting in this space, so they jumped in quickly and mobilized, even as of this morning, to make sure that they could help us out. They also record our strolls, they take videos of all kinds of things that the city has going on, of course, all of the local sports events, and I personally don't think that we give enough credit to CMC, so I want to take a moment. MVPs, our local partnership MVPs, are Carroll Arts Center and the Carroll Media Center. But of course, we also have some local staff MVPs that I just want to make sure I give credit to, in addition to the rest of you. The Streets Department is certainly one of them. They have had one single weekend off in the, in the year of 2025, because of all the snow that we've had. Then, of course, the moment we didn't have snow, there was the water issue at 45 West. The moment we moved over to City Hall, they have mobilized on a daily basis to move things in, to make us comfortable. It's really surprising how many things an office needs to run. I wouldn't think about that myself. It seems like we're mobile and easy to, to move and maneuver, but we require a lot of stuff, a lot of, a lot of things to come with us. There are approximately 18, 19, 20 folding tables, some of us need multiple folding tables, because we have so many things to work on, and they just made it happen, in addition to all the regular work that they're doing as well. So Streets Department, my goodness, they've, we work 8:00 to 4:30 at the City Administration Building, Streets Department came in early every single day since the Water Main break to make sure in the morning that we're all set to go. And as the council president mentioned, my office and the office of the city clerk, as well as my executive assistant, became the whiskey tasting office over the weekend, so now we're referring to it as the Whiskey Tasting Center. And Streets Department came in, moved all of us, took photographs of how we had everything set up, and then reestablished it in other offices over, on Friday, so the Rec Department staff could come in and set up and decorate. And then first thing Monday morning, before we came in at 8:00 in the morning, the Streets Department, who had worked the whole weekend, had set everyone back up in the Whiskey Tasting Office, otherwise known as my office, otherwise known as the city clerk's office. So we really want to thank them, they have gone out of their way, and honestly, we couldn't have done this without them. So number one, want to thank them. I also want to make sure that we acknowledge the IT Department, because the moment that we had the, the water issue in the building that Saturday, as I mentioned before, our IT director is one of the ones that found it, he came into the building very quickly. We found out today that many of the equipment that we thought we had lost has, isn't going to be lost, and that's in part because he and his team and the Streets Department mobilized so quickly to move things out of the way of running water. Of course, all of us come up with our needs at City Hall, we need, we need connections to phones, we need cell phones, we need printers, we need power sources, the Wi-Fi's not working, the this isn't working, I can't get on my server, I can't get onto the folders. All of that is the IT Department getting us set up and ready to go. So the help desk has been going off nonstop, and they continue to be helpful every single step of the way. So staff MVPs this week and last week are definitely the IT Department and the Streets Department, and I really, really appreciate all of their work. We're going to give one honorable mention, while I still have the literal microphone, and that is to the Finance Department, because they still managed, in the middle of being relocated to a new building, they still managed to get payroll out without missing a beat, and we processed invoices on time this week, despite the fact that their department particularly requires a lot of equipment and connectivity, and they just managed to get it done, as they always do. We have an incredible staff, we've always had an incredible staff, but emergencies like this give us an opportunity to realize, in other ways, how great they are. So I want to thank you as well, to the Finance Department. All right, we're going to move around to the other departments, I'm going to start with, first with the Public Works Department. So in addition to the Streets Department and all they've been doing, they're also preparing for pavement management, which is underway right now, and will begin in a more earnest They're currently paving the cul-de-sacs on Mulligan Drive and moving to Mulligan Drive itself, and beginning Monday, the 17th, they will have a second crew starting on Spyglass, Firestone, Litchfield, Burning Tree, and Dahoma Farm Road. The public, excuse me. The Recreation Director has been given the day off after a much-earned, long day on The Recreation Director has been given the day off after a much-earned, long day on Saturday. She wanted me to let you know that this was the largest Celtic canter running race that we've had to date. So we're larger and a lot more runners coming, coming to these events. All right. All right. You've heard enough from me, so we're going to go around the room now. We will start with the Housing Department. Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I just want to report that this past Thursday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Carroll County Landlords Association. I spoke with them about our property maintenance program, as well as our housing chores voucher program. And as I spoke about our housing chores voucher program, I was able to give them some tips on common items that we found that would cause a property to fail. And we had a very good exchange, very good dialogue, and it was a, I think it was a rewarding evening for myself, as well as the landlords that, that attended this session. So just wanted to report that. So thank you.
Are there any questions for the Housing Department? That we've done there, Mr. Rogers. Are there any questions? If none, let's move on to the Finance Department. Ms. Rogers?
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Impulse, and thank you for the appreciation for the finance staff. Really, my report will be brief, and it's just to echo what you've said. It's really to thank the Streets Department, the IT Department. We've made a number of requests of them on a daily basis and probably will continue to do so for as long as we're sitting at City Hall. But from my perspective, it's been pretty seamless. We haven't really lost much time at all or lost a beat. So I appreciate, and I'm looking at Rick Moore, who's our IT director. I appreciate all that you and your team have done to be creative and to help solve the problems that we've run into on a daily basis. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Are there any questions for the Finance Department? If none, we will move on to the Planning Department. Mr. Depot?
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals did not meet on March 4th as they had no applications before them. On March 5th, the Historic District Commission approved the facade improvement application, FI 2502, and a certificate of eligibility for a tax credit for 205 East Main Street. The HTC also discussed the nation's 250th anniversary celebration and historic district entrance signage. Sorry. I had to move papers around. On March 20th, the Planning and Zoning Commission is scheduled to meet. However, at this time, there are no items scheduled for a commission to review. And that completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions for the Planning Director?
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the Police Chief. Chief Ledgo?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're excited to have a police recruit, Justin Dean, who is scheduled to graduate from the Carroll County Police Academy on March the 27th. He'll then transition into field training in our Patrol Bureau. As a reminder, we have our annual award ceremony on Wednesday, April the 16th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Best Western Hotel Conference Center. Our staff, both sworn and civilian, have achieved some admirable accomplishments over the last year. I'm very excited about this year's ceremony. And then finally, to follow up on what Council member Cavaci was talking about, we have Justice and Law Day, which is one of the days for the Leadership Carroll Class that the Chamber of Commerce sponsors tomorrow. And each year, we try to tweak it to make it better. We've really worked on incorporating some experiential breakout sessions for the class. Class members get to experience scenarios with the police cruiser driving simulator, the Milo decision-making simulator, and the virtual reality scenario system. So it really makes the day fun for them and interesting and interactive. So excited about participating in that tomorrow. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Are there any questions, Mr. Chief? And now we'll move on to the IT Director.
Thank you. Just want to say, it has been a challenging couple of weeks, but we've definitely stood up to the challenge, and my team has been amazing. Streets have been amazing. Thank you, the chief. We've been crashing their pad over their, their training rooms. That's been our IT setup for the last couple of weeks. But we continue to face the challenges that come and pivot when needed and do what we got to do. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Are there any questions for the IT Director? I have a quick update for anyone listening from Stonegate Development. Looks like there's multiple fiber outages in the Stonegate Development area. A contractor struck a fiber main, but we'll have that fixed as soon as we can. All right, Mr. President, that concludes the departmental reports.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Impulse. And, you know, I just want to say, as, as big a trial as this has been, you know, relocating everybody, you know, when we moved everybody out of City Hall some years ago into, you know, space that we thought was more appropriate for, you know, for office space, we never thought we'd be going back there and using it like that. But not every city has a backup city office building.
That's true.
So it's, it's nice that we had one when we needed it. And so, you know, it's, it's great that we were able to do that. So that's, that concludes that, our regular agenda. The final item on our agenda is citizen comments, when we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to any city issues, either on tonight's agenda or anything else on their minds. For citizens not attending the public meeting, we invite you to send us your comments, you know, via email at comments@westminstermd.gov. All comments received by email will be shared with the mayor and council. We ask commenters to please include their address and phone number with their comments, in case we need to reach back out to them. We'll now invite comments from anyone who is present this evening. This is an opportunity for the public to share their comments with us. And we ask once again that if you do wish to be heard, that you share your address with us. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Hey, Lyndy, can you speak? It's hard because I, I have trouble hearing you, if you don't mind speaking up.
I was checking to find out about painting a mural on one of the building I just bought. I was surprised to find out that the city of Westminster considers, considers murals signs, which would fall under a sign ordinance. We would hope that the city can pass an ordinance so that we can have art in Westminster, and that it wouldn't have too many government regulations to limit it and committees and things that we couldn't paint things. Murals can be tourist attractions. Frederick is internationally known for their trompe l'oeil mural. Trompe l'oeil is to fool the eye of earthbound, which is an angel leaning out the side of a window on a building that really looks like a window. And I would like to put a Western Maryland train coming out of the side of one of my buildings, which would be historic in Westminster. And I'm going to, and Dominic just finished painting the side of Tire Pro, if you want to drive by and see it. And I think Dominic would like to say something.
Dominic Jones, local artist, 763 Carbine Drive, Westminster, Maryland. And the kind of branch off with Ms. McNulty saying, I know a lot of, most of you guys know me, follow me and things like that. And I was hearing with, one of you guys was saying about, you know, how everything's been around the neighborhood with the businesses and stuff. So what a better way to really show Westminster's history, you know, with, with the art, you know. And Ms. McNulty wants to, you know, leave, leave something to Westminster. So, and I'm, I'm behind her on that. And just looking to, to, to show everybody out here in Westminster and all the tourists that come out here, what Westminster is about through, through art, you know. And, and that's something I'm looking forward to, so.
And we also hope that if we do a trompe l'oeil mural, that other towns will follow suit, and it'll be a Carroll County tourist attraction.
One more thing. So, and then with the, the permit thing, what she was saying, it's been a lot of people that's been in town that have been wanting me to do things, and they're not sure about, you know, permits and stuff. So if we can try to, you know, clear that up or try to get a more understanding of what they can do and where they can go to kind of express. Because a lot of people want to put stuff on their buildings and on their garages, and, and sometimes I have to kind of push them away because I have to get the information that I need for the permits and stuff. They don't know if it's going to be considered a sign or a mural and stuff, so.
All right. Thank you very much. We will follow up on that. Anyone else wish to be heard?
This has just been really interesting to me. I haven't been to one of these meetings before.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you give your name and address for the record?
Oh, my name? Oh, sorry. Sue Yingling. I live on Ridge Road, just on the other side of the city line.
We're sorry to hear that.
So thank you for letting me attend. But I just want to tell you that how much I believe Westminster is such a really cool city. And I've lived here for, well, actually, I went to college here and never went away. And that was a long time ago. So, and all these departments and everything, you're so impressive. And I want to also thank you especially for our Bird City designation. And I'm going to tell you, we'll probably be back because we've, the Boys and Girls Club has some bluebirds who need some housing in the city limits. So we'll be back asking you about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right. There's no one else? And that concludes our agenda and the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, March 24th, probably here, but check the website and the published agenda to make sure. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned.
Thank you.